Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Here.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Thank you. We're going to move into presentations, and tonight, it's always fun to do a proclamation. And tonight, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. And if any of you haven't met our new arborist, Brandon Sly is right here. He's wonderful. Bring this down in a minute, but I'll read it. Arbor Day is held every year in Kirkwood and is designated for planting trees. Whereas Kirkwood is known as the Green Tree City because of its vast number of trees and park area, and trees have always been an important part of Kirkwood, the early residents concerned with the appearance of the community established a program for beautification which has remained a characteristic to this day. The annual Green Tree Festival has been a highlight on the city's calendar since 1961. Kirkwood Urban Forestry Commission was created in February of 1998 with a passage of the -- well, we don't need to know that. But I will mention, before I continue to read, that if anyone's interested in being on the Urban Forestry Commission, I would love to know that. The Arbor Day plantings will take place on Saturday, April 26, where the green hawthorn and the flowering dogwood will be planted at Kirkwood City Hall. So all the events are going to be right up here at City Hall, starting at 9:00 a.m. An additional 48 trees will be planted throughout the city. And that's -- so the total is 45 trees will be planted that day. The city of Kirkwood has been designated as a Tree City USA for 35 years. So I, Elizabeth W. Gibbons, mayor of the city of Kirkwood, do hereby, on behalf of the Kirkwood City Council, proclaim April 26, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Kirkwood.
He does a fabulous job, too.
Mayor, I just want to echo your -- Brandon has done an outstanding job in his less than a year here. So I've been on the -- it's been great to be on the Urban Forestry Commission over this past year, and Brandon's addition to the city has been, you know, quite outstanding. And so the Arbor Day luncheon recognized Kirkwood earlier this month for the 35 years. So Brandon's going to give us 35 more. Great. Thank you, Councilmember Jacsetic. Okay. Let's see. We'll now move into public comments.
The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the city council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question-and-answer session, and the city council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the city council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk of action as needed.
Thank you. David, has anyone filled out a comment card who wishes to make a public comment?
Mayor and council, we do have several requests for comment this evening. The first is John Nations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Ms. Ash, Ms. Graves. My name is John Nations. I'm a lawyer with the firm Adoster Nations, Alamon Boyle, and I'm here on behalf of Greenbrier and the Major Partial Side Plan Amendment. This is an issue I know that is as well-known to all of you as it is to me, and I'm just to let you know we're here. We certainly request your favorable consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Reynolds?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is William Reynolds. I'm a resident of Valley Park, have been since 1995. I'm a 40-year member to IBW and a former owner of the Valley Deli on St. Louis Avenue. I was born right south of Philadelphia and moved to Newark, Delaware, which is a lot like your northern end of town here, which is beautiful, you know. Kirkwood doesn't seem to have any problem keeping their town beautiful, clean, historic homes. I see no trash on the streets or anything like that. I'm going to cut this short. I got a whole bunch of stuff here that, you know, says stuff about me, who I am, and what brought me here. But I'm going to cut it short because it looks like you're pretty busy here tonight. After -- you know, I go to all the meetings over at Valley Park, but after years of not getting any answers or any help with a lot of things, you know, looked at you like you're crazy, you know, and I commend you for the arborist and Arbor Day and all that, you know, I come up with the crazy idea of planting 3.2 miles of our levee with wildflowers, but I looked at like I'm some kind of crazy idiot. I come here to you tonight as a resident of Valley Park. I've got no political affiliation. I come here representing nobody other than myself. So -- but I am going to make a request of the city of Kirkwood here, a respectful request, that I've run a business right there on -- it's essentially a Main Street marshal onto St. Louis Avenue through Valley Park. And for years, Kirkwood has run your refuse trucks down through the middle of our city. You know, I know it's a public highway, and, you know, everybody has a right to use the highways, but during times of floods, you folks seem to find other ways to get to the -- to our lovely landfill that we have there in Valley Park. So I'm here just to ask you as good neighbors in respectful city, if you could, by executive order or legislation, whatever way you have to do it, you know, maybe redirect your traffic to, you know, down the interstate, down 44. We got enough problems being the Main Road, 141, and trash all over our neighborhood. You know, I appreciate the fact that you folks keep your city clean. For some reason, at Valley Park, we can't do it.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. You know what? We do have a limit of three minutes, so thank you.
It's simple. That's all I needed. Thank you. Maybe if we get past this, we can go on to annexing Valley Park to be part of -- you know, part of Kirkwood, so we have one less kingdom in the city.
Thank you.
Mark Petty?
Hi again. I'm Mark Petty. I'm the director of Kirkwood Electric. I just wanted to get some information out here real quickly on a couple of things. Ann Avenue, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that the electric department is currently doing a pole lead out there so that we can make sure that the framing or the way the wires are set up on the poles are going to be able to accommodate for the new substation and the power being delivered from there. It's a short-term, short, quick fix that we're trying to get in there so that we can beat the heat, and as you can tell, heat's already here. But we put poles side by side. They're not in the optimal positions that we like to have them in. We are as close into the sidewalk as we can get it to try to accommodate space. But in the future, we will have a plan to be able to do a new pole lead and get those out of the sidewalk and have a brand-new Ann Avenue that is going to accommodate pedestrians and make things look like we like to do them. A good example of the projects that we like to do are on Kwan, and Kwan gives you an example how those things kind of go. We'll beautify that, and we'll make it a lot better than it is today. But proper planning always takes a little bit of time to do these things right. We don't have time now because it's getting ready to get hot. In the future, we'll be able to do a new pole lead over there and straighten that out. Just one other thing, real quick. Taylor and Monroe. I don't know if everybody's familiar with what's going on over there, but there was a new development that's over there. A sewer had to get put in for that, so the road had to be closed. We've had to come back behind that contractor and put in a new service extension so we can have new power for that complex. But that road's going to be open tomorrow night. So from now on, we'll be able to get that cleaned up and have it open, and certainly for the church and the activities for Easter, we'll have that place open. Lastly, if you have any junk or you're doing spring cleaning, we're doing a spring cleaning event with the Chamber over at the Junior College. That'll be Saturday, May the 3rd. Push it, pull it, get over. Whatever you got to get over there, get it over there. We'll help you do some spring cleaning. Thanks.
Mark.
It's Mark.
Julie Missy?
Good evening. Hopefully you all had the chance to read the email I sent earlier this week detailing the importance of a noise barrier fully blocking the line of sight to the recipient in order to be effective. As we have said, the five-foot extension of the wall on the south side of Greenbrier's pickleball courts will not block the line of sight to the homes on Briargate. We have shared our concerns about how the noise from these pickleball courts will affect our son with special needs and all of the other human beings who live close by. Tonight, I just want to read you a few quotes from other real people who have been unfortunate enough to be living with pickleball courts too close to their homes. "We hear the ball hit the paddle from inside our homes all day long, 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. I want to stress that it's all day, nonstop. I have a child with autism spectrum disorder. Since courts opened, his behaviors with the loud noises are more problematic, with increased hitting himself, headbutting me, banging his head on the ground because he gets dysregulated by the noises. I am an Iraq veteran, spent six months living in a plywood shack and hearing rockets and mortars hit the camp often. I walked away from that experience with no PTSD. This is worse. Phantom noises wake me up from a deep sleep. My heart jumps when I hear certain pop sounds. Splitting headaches, high blood pressure, sleep deprivation. The noise, it sticks in your head and you hear it when it's not there. It's a form of PTSD. I live in earplugs. Migraines, relationship issues, feel like I'm going crazy. Sleep is completely disrupted. I'm an ER doctor used to trauma and stress. Pickleball noise is like nothing I've ever dealt with. It's like having a pistol range in your backyard. This is like Chinese water torture. Most annoying sound ever. I have two options: either wear earplugs all of the time or sell my home." A couple quotes from people trying to sell their homes. "We had over 60 people come through, and many came back again for a second look. Each time, no matter what time it was, someone was playing pickleball. Well, guess what? The people wanting to buy it don't think they could deal with the noise. Our house has been on the market for eight months with many price decreases. No one wants to live near a pickleball court. Please vote no tonight. Thank you."
Thank you.
Kathy Converse?
I hope when you vote tonight on the Greenbrier Hills Country Club's request to increase the height of their pickleball fence, that you will consider the following: that Kirkwood's Planning and Zoning Commission voted not to recommend approval of this amendment; that Kirkwood's own fence code does not permit a 15-foot solid fence around any structure; and that this would be a dubious first for Kirkwood; that just another five feet actually increases the height of this unsightly structure by 50%; that this fence already is not harmonious with the existing buildings and adjacent property, and increasing the height by 50% will make that worse, not better; that this fence will further degrade the character and value of the surrounding properties; that this would be the tallest solid fence in Kirkwood; that the view from our backyards will look like this -- this is what you have in front of you. I hope you will also consider that the science behind the negative effect of pickleball noise are well-understood and include a wide array of cardiovascular and neurological disorders; that the noise, even with the 15-foot fence, will be continual and inescapable for those of us who live nearby; that unlike the people who are permitted to play on these courts, we neighbors cannot go home and escape the noise; that it represents an undue financial hardship for surrounding neighbors, as evidenced by the fact that it has already lowered our property values; that a study of the impact of pickleball courts on directly adjacent properties, if we could sell our houses at all, showed a 10% to 20% decline in property values, which in our case would mean a reduction of selling price of our homes of $50,000 to $100,000; that the only acoustical engineer with experience in pickleball noise mitigation who has been consulted on this project says 15 feet is not high enough to block the line of sight and therefore will not be effective; that once again, Kirkwood Planning and Zoning voted not to support this proposal. And upon considering all of these factors, I hope you will choose to protect the well-being of Kirkwood citizens and property and vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Missy?
Thank you.
Leland McHugh?
Yeah, last name is McClure. My third-grade teacher had probably whipped me for my license, for my signature now.
I'm a clinical and forensic scientist. I live on Briargate Lane on the 2100 block. I just wanted to reiterate something that I said at the last meeting. In regards with pickleball noise, it's an evolving process across the country in terms of controlling pickleball and making it something that's amenable so that it works for all the neighbors that are there. In particular, I just wanted to call that again and just remind everybody that back in September of '24, which is fairly recent on this, the Model Noise Ordinance for Pickleball was developed in accordance with the EPA Model Noise Ordinances. That policy provisions has three provisions in it. It's the Model Noise Ordinance for Pickleball. First provision is for general application, an 800-foot setback for residences from pickleball courts. If there is abatement that's used on that, the abatement has to have line of sight because that's what will control the impulsive noise. The second one is that it should not be audible in any residential dwellings. And the third one is that it should not have any pickleball play in the evening and night. And as I say, it's an evolving process across the country in terms of dealing with pickleball. It's not anti-pickleball. It's saying, yes, do it, but do it right, plan for it, and that way it's controlled. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Kevin Keating?
Thank you. I live in Greenbrier and am also a member of the club. I'm not sure if staff is here to answer a question, but that would be, based on the sound study that's already been done, how close was the decimal level to be within the -- within a range that would be acceptable? Do we know whether it's?
Kevin, this is not a time to ask questions, but we'll listen to your comments.
All right.
Thanks.
So my guess is that it's just very little. They've done two tests. They put up the single abatement and did not pass it. They did some additional abatement on the fencing, and that still did not pass. My guess is that it's very close, and so this additional five feet right above the existing fence might just be the final step that would be needed to meet the requirements of the sound study. So the outline of the fence is already there. We're just looking to fill that in. If you look at it from the residence, you're just looking through that open gap above the fence and looking straight into the courts. So it's not like it's going to be blocking some additional aesthetic -- any aesthetics there. So I would hope that the council would just approve the additional five feet of fence in order to provide for one additional sound study and let that be determined whether it meets the standards or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, there are no additional requests for comment at this time.
Thank you. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda?
Motion, second.
Great.
I would like to request to remove this from the consent agenda. I have some corrections to make.
Yes. Okay. And it'll go to the bottom of the -- okay, great. Thank you. Now we'll move into unfinished business. Bill 11074.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance vacating a 25-foot right-of-way on a tract of land being part of Lot 7 of Robin Hood, recorded in Plat Book 57, page 34 of the St. Louis County Records, located in the city of Kirkwood, St. Louis County, Missouri.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill 11074? No. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Very good. Bill 11074 has passed. Bill 11075. Yes. There are a motion and a second to bring the substitute bill to 11075 on the floor for consideration.
Motion, second.
Very good. Just want to have a little bit of explanation, if we could, Jonathan, about the sub--
We'll need a vote on that motion in a second to bring the substitute bill to the floor, so we'll just need it all in favor, say aye.
Oh, and then we discuss.
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Okay, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that's passed. And now we'll get a little explanation of why we have a substitute bill.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor and council. So the substitute bill is -- allows for two changes based on previous discussion. One, based on previous discussion. Two, the first item was to add the restriction that this allowance for retail businesses to serve alcohol by the drink or beer and wine by the drink with the proper license would be capped to -- cut off at 9:00 a.m. So -- or not, I'm sorry, 9:00 p.m. So they could do it between 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Okay. That was a request of the council so that there was a upper limit to the sales in the evening or night. And the second item, continue to be educated by our great city attorneys, and one of the provisions that staff had drafted previously with the intent of allowing a wine retail store or other retail store that sells alcohol to also sell by the drink, we thought the provision had to be amended to allow for that. But I was informed that that provision, what it prevents them from doing is actually recork -- so selling pouring from a bottle and then allowing -- corking it and allowing you to walk off the premises with that, I believe, is accurate, right? So that provision to accomplish what the council wanted to accomplish in allowing a wine store, beer store from also being able to serve for consumption on the premises as an accessory use, right, still defined as how we proposed it originally. We did not actually need to amend that provision. It was my misunderstanding, so.
Are there any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacsetic?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
The bill has passed final reading. Bill 11076.
This is an ordinance amending the provisions of the Municipal Code of Ordinances, Chapter 25, zoning and subdivision, regarding architectural review.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept Bill 11076?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions?
So, Mayor, I have actually two motions I would like to make regarding this bill, and I emailed everyone today the text of the proposed changes, and I talked to staff about this. And if I'm not speaking for Jonathan, I believe he's actually in favor of the changes. So I move to amend Section 25-21B, 1, Roman numeral 2, or rather, IIIB, to read as follows: "The construction, reconstruction, expansion, or other changes to exterior building elements of principal and accessory buildings," and here comes the change, "instead of 'in all non-residential zoning districts' should -- would read 'for all non-residential uses.'" So that kind of broadens the scope. Like, if you have an individual structure, for example, Apartment 2, that's surrounded by residential, and we've got a community college, that would fall under this. It just sort of clarifies what the application would be to this.
Jonathan's over there shaking his head, yes, so.
I move that we make that change in that clause.
Do I have?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions to the motion? No. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay.
And then I have another proposed change. I move to amend Section 25-21B, 2, Roman numeral 6, VI, to read as follow: "Single-family residential decks that are not covered by a roof, pergola, or similar structure are not visible from the street on which the house is addressed. Do not include a chimney and/or fireplace wall --" the word "and" would be stricken because we're going to continue this phrase -- "are no taller than eight feet above grade as measured from the average adjacent grade to the top floor of the proposed decking," and here comes the change, "and which have the uninhabitable space under the deck screened by lattice or similar methods." So that would be the added, whatever requirement for single-family decks to be exempt from ARB review.
Do I have a second to that motion? Okay. Are there any comments or questions?
So if I can ask what the motivation is to have this latest screening when this is not visible from the street on which the house is addressed?
So right now, ARB, almost without exception, requires that decks that have uninhabitable space, whether it's in -- I mean, most decks don't really -- it's a porch if it's the front of the house, but this also applies to porch. They require lattice work or some other kind of enclosure, like one-by-whatevers, to enclose unusable, uninhabitable space, basically for aesthetic reasons. It's decks -- this applies only to a deck, which ARB now does not review. They review decks if they're part of a bigger project, a new house or an addition. So this is something -- I mean, if they were looking at this, they would do it anyway. But they don't just do a deck project because they would be inundated with things added to their agenda. So this is something that kind of like slips through the cracks. So this is an attempt to just make it consistent, apply their reading of their authority and code, whatever. It applies to deck projects that they know -- they do not review, so that it's as if it were part of a project that they would review, and then they'd say, well, you're going to have to put lattice work or whatever around the bottom of the deck that's basically uninhabitable.
Thank you.
Any small questions? All those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All opposed, nay? One... Okay.
Okay.
All right. The motion passes. Now we'll take a motion and a second on the substitute.
On the bill as amended.
On the bill as amended, sorry. Motion and second? Oh, on the bill as amended.
You already have a motion and a second on the floor? You just now need an all in favor, unless we actually need to open it back up for discussion.
Right, okay. I have big discussion. Okay, good. So, again, this might... I don't want to trigger anybody, but this... There may be a lot of feelings associated with this, so I really am trying to recap it for city council, and I've spent a lot of time the last couple of days looking at this issue. So I'm going to give you what I think is historic information and then tell you why I believe we should not pass this and/or table it for further discussion. I'll let you be the judge. So from what I can tell, this all kind of started in 2018 with a subcommittee of the Landmarks Commission. Some of you were probably here on the board at that time, and they talked about revising the landmarks code. November 2021, the work was completed in a review by the Joint Committee of the City Council and Landmarks at that time. That was 2021. July 2022, the work was completed. The city council, it was noted that they were going to have a work session to review the proposed ordinance of landmarks. And at the time, landmarks went from a five-page ordinance to a 29-page ordinance, and that was back in 2022. I didn't see a lot of activity from the council in 2023. It was before several of us were on, but it was noted in 8/17/2023, there was a public hearing, and it noted that the council discussed the landmarks revision during the September 7th work session with the scheduled first reading of ARB. This is where the ARB stuff came in, in landmarks to be on 9/21. It appeared in late 2023, the council had two sessions on the landmarks and ARB ordinances, 9/7 and 9/21, and there was no action after 9/27/2023 until the public hearing, which we had February 3rd of this year. ARB changes, it appears they separated out the landmarks from the ARB. So now let's look at what we're asking to vote on. ARB originally was just a... Something that commercial had to go through, and at some point, we added new residents and some other things. Commercial was binding, residential was advisory. From what I read in our current review, it's Architecture Review, it says, "The advisory decisions, Architecture Review shall be required for the construction or expansion of all new single-family," which to me is kind of confusing. If it's an expansion, then it probably isn't new, but I don't know, maybe I don't understand the words. "Or expansion of all new single-family dwellings and the construction and expansion of all accessory buildings related to single-family." So our current ordinance just addresses new. When we're going to take the word "new" out, we now are going to hold all of our residents to having to come before ARB. And under the residential side, there could be up to a 180-day hold on moving your project forward. And the commercial side has a 90-day. Now residential is potentially going to be punished or have another barrier. So I'm concerned about moving off of "new." Now, my confusion, and at some point, and I don't need it tonight, but if I look at the Architecture Review Board, a lot of what they're looking at now is, here's a screen porch addition, two-story addition, rear deck with roof, remove a rear deck and add a new one, covered patio. So it appears we're doing review for anything, which I'm not sure matches the current ordinance we have. So that's a concern. The... This ordinance removes part of the landmarks connection to it, but there are, if you look at our current ordinance, there are additional review for historic structures, parts that were not removed from it, from, again, my 10-hour review over the last two days. So a lot of questions and disconnect in here. The current ordinance has three exemptions. The new one has 13 exemptions, but a lot of those are tied to, what I can see, all of a sudden, doing all the bill, all the residences. So now we're going to exclude things that I'm not sure should be necessarily covered right now. I mean, it's... We created another level of exemptions before we actually, you know, kind of correctly updated, from my perspective, the ordinance. There's the definition of terms in the ordinance, changing from alteration to building elements, and, you know, again, I'm not sure I understand how we use definitions to explain what we need in our ordinances, but, you know, the building elements definition also has some preferential thoughts. You know, it's almost kind of an additional opinion piece. So as I cross-referenced all this, I really have a lot of concerns about what we're trying to do. And again, for those of you who have been on this council, do you remember what was discussed in 2018, and 19, and 20, and 21, and 22, and, well, 23? I remember what we did in 24, which was nothing, and now we're in 25. So my recommendation is, we either fail this, or we continue it till we have time to really delve into it. Again, seven years this has been going on, a couple of weeks is not enough, I think, for us to make a decision. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Wow.
Okay, that's not my... And maybe I'm mistaken, but my take on this is, this relieves Architectural Review Board from looking at projects that occur at historic, at landmarks or in historic districts. That would just go to landmarks instead of both landmarks and ARB. Right now, landmarks and ARB jointly look at anything that's in a historic district, and under this, it would just go to landmarks. It also takes out the... For under number two, well, it states the first one, what I just said, and then painting, if somebody wants to paint their house, as long as it's a similar color to what's there, ARB doesn't need to look at it. I don't know about this Roman numeral three, changes in occupancy not involving exterior work. I assume that's something interior, which I don't know that that's ARB purview anyway. Interior renovations that don't affect the exterior elevations and facade of the building, that's sort of self-explanatory. That's just interior work, which I don't know that they have purview there anyway. Minor alterations and expansions to the windows and doors, which have been reviewed by Planning and Development Services Director, and then the decks, which I just mentioned, that's just basically a deck. No pergola, no roof, not visible from the street, doesn't include a chimney fireplace, because those various clauses would trigger a review. And then added that, since they're not looking at it, as ARB regularly requires enclosing the space under a deck that is not elevated above eight feet, it would require that it be enclosed. Solar panel systems right now, they look at them, but they basically are not authorized to make any changes. Any architectural aesthetic changes that they might want to make usually are preempted because the panels are usually situated on the roof faces to allow optimal exposure to the sun. They often recommend that a roof is new before you put solar panels on, but that's the extent of it. In-kind repair or replacement of exterior building elements, so I'm not sure what exactly that would... An example of this, but I suppose if you needed to put new shutters or something, as long as it's like-for-like and same color finish consideration, all of that, I mean, it's alleviating homeowners or property owners from coming before ARB for simple projects that, to me, really, you know, are just sort of a, you know, sort of a typically no question involved. Swimming pools, they don't look at swimming pools right now. Accessory structures like small sheds, I don't believe that those are reviewed right now. And retaining walls, I mean, maybe Jonathan can come up here, but to me, this is sort of small projects that many of them are not reviewed right now. So it's just basically saying, various things don't need to go to landmarks and to ARB, and specifically these others also don't need to go to ARB to alleviate lots of red tape and reviews for small things, so.
Nancy, I do appreciate your perspective. My, and I think you kind of reinforced that we need more discussion on this, the "new" is what changes all of that, you know? So I'm not sure that what's coming to ARB now, under our current ordinance, you know, should be coming, and I think that's a discussion we need to have. And again, "new" changes the landscape when you remove that word, when you take that word out. So again, I think your points, I understand, but I think the dilemma is, this is very confusing in terms of what's changing and what's not. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to continue this to the May 15, 2025 council meeting.
There a second?
I'll second it.
I think I heard a lot of people wanting to do it. All those in favor, do I... Discussion on that?
Yes. To continue, I do remember all of that that happened. I think there, you know, this is a very, very important issue for our citizens. There should be complete clarity in how we handle this. We have talked about this for a long time. I see no harm in having further discussion about this. I agree, we're trying to separate this a little bit, but I think it's worth having a little more discussion. The "new" part disturbed me also because I, you know, how are we going to handle this in future? So that's what I want to do.
Any additional comments or questions?
I just wonder if we could have Jonathan come up and maybe settle this "new" question
Let's see, the motion that's on the floor is to...
Continue.
Continue it.
Continue. So, yeah, yeah. Okay. And is that a roll call? All in favor of continuing this bill, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
So the bill will be continued. Resolution 302025.
29.
I'm sorry, 29.
But we'll need a motion in a second to bring it.
Okay. Thank you. The substitute resolution 20... A vote on the motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
We're bringing the substitute bill, substitute resolution 292025, to the floor for consideration. That's what we're voting on.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, so an explanation of the substitute resolution. Jonathan, could you lead us through that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. We do need a motion and a second prior to discussion on this. A motion and a second to approve the substitute resolution, and then we can open it up for discussion.
Okay, okay.
Motion. Second.
To approve or to bring it to the table?
We already brought it to the floor, but the next action, when we have resolutions, is you take a motion and a second. You're not voting. We'll have to do a roll call for a final vote. This is a motion and a second to accept the substitute resolution is read. We open it up for discussion, then we'll do a final vote, which is a roll call on a resolution.
Okay, so what I'm asking now is, all in favor of the substitute resolution?
Nope. You're opening it for...
Open it up.
We just need a motion in a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
A motion, please.
Have McLean, I didn't know. Thank you.
Okay. Now Jonathan can come up and speak.
There we go.
Okay. Roberts rules of order.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So the substitute resolution that was just brought to the floor was, is to serve the purpose of requiring additional landscaping on the south side of the courts based on... It was prepared, the substitute bill was prepared based on questions from the council, and what is shown on the screen is an updated landscape plan. So this is a landscape plan that was originally provided by Greenbrier. As you see, it was received December 20, 2022. We had our, the city's forester inspect because there were replacement plantings done recently, and so he went out to inspect those to make sure that they replaced the right type and number of trees. And during that inspection, it was noted that Greenbrier planted more trees than were required on the original landscape plan. And with the request or interest in additional plantings on the south side, we asked the forester to provide an opinion on the trees that are out there currently. So what he did was provided this updated plan to show the locations of the Norway spruce that were installed. He also added the perimeter line, which shows the density at maturity, and his opinion was that if the, by approving the substitute bill, it references this updated plan, which then would make those additional trees that were not required, it would make them required. So we are updating it to show that the spruce trees that are out there on the site, all of them would be required, and in the forester's opinion, they would provide a continuous screen to the south.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I need to read this into the record. We did not read the substitute bill into the record.
Okay. Sorry.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution approving the major site plan partial amendment on the property known as 12665 Big Ben Boulevard, Greenbrier Hills Country Club, subject to certain conditions.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move into discussion. Okay.
We are discussing which?
We are discussing the substitute bill. The substitute resolution.
Just for the landscaping.
Just for the landscaping. And then this is the whole resolution.
This is the whole bill.
Yep. The whole resolution.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay.
Well, this is something that occurred to me, and also, one of the speakers came and suggested that the hours of use be limited, and I apologize, it didn't come with a, you know, a proposed amendment, but I would like us to consider limiting the hours of use to, I don't know what, 10:00 a.m. to whatever time in the evening might, you know, be a reasonable, as, you know, an additional condition on their use.
So are you wanting to make a motion?
Well, I, yes, I would make a motion, but I don't know what the content of that motion would be as to reasonableness of limiting hours of use.
Mayor, can I jump in for a second on this?
Yes.
I'm glad you raised that issue. I was looking at Resolution 3-2023A that's attached, and on page two at the top, it talks about the hours of operation for pickup all shall be restricted from 8:00 a.m. to sunset. It talks about no lights. Is that still part of the resolution?
Yes. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't.
Okay.
I, I wanted clarification on that. No, I wanted clarification on that too.
Okay.
Okay, additional comments, please? I, I have my comments. Go ahead. Just in general, I want to talk a little bit about what's before us. For me, this is not about whether the neighbors' pictures presented to the council were good ones or bad ones, or about Kirkwood Park having pickleball courts, or about individual pickleball courts are located on the residential property. This is about a previous council's decision to allow Greenbrier to build them and use them if they could pass a sound study based on St. Louis County ordinances. And, and they gave Greenbrier clear parameters by which this could happen. Greenbrier took the chance, built the courts, and failed to sound test. They came back to the city with another plan, a partial site plan, partial amendment, the one that's actually before us tonight, and presented it to the P and Z last summer in June. And after very careful deliberation, P and Z did not approve the site plan. At the time, the council was notified that we would, that Greenbrier was going to bring it to us. And we actually had a public hearing scheduled for July. But then it was canceled. And my understanding at the time is that Greenbrier told the city they wanted to table the public hearing and, in order to return to P and Z with an alternate proposal. An alternate proposal was never submitted. And then in February this year, Greenbrier sued the city of Kirkwood. And unfortunately, in today's world, sometimes if you don't get what you want, you sue. So now we are here. We have the, the same partial amendment that was denied last June by the, by P and Z in front of us. And this is what I think it's about. This is the, for me, this is about the residents who live around the pickleball courts, who day in and day out, seven days a week, will have to endure those, having those courts as an unrelenting neighbor. I believe the neighbors' concerns matter. I believe the neighbors matter, and more importantly, Mr. and Miss, Missy, your son matters. I support the decision of our P and Z and the concerns of the residents, and I am not in favor of passing this. Thank you. Who else? Any more discussion? Councilwoman Zimmer.
Thank you. A lot of good comments. Councilmember Jaxettek, I, I've seen this through from the beginning. I was on the previous council when we came up with this because it was a very difficult situation because this is Kirkwood neighbor against Kirkwood neighbor. I, for one, am disappointed that the sides have not come together to an acceptable conclusion because right now, one group of neighbors is not going to be happy with the decision we make. That is very unfortunate, especially for us in Kirkwood. I, I think the comments about the neighbors, you know, tomorrow, the pickleball courts are going to be there, and the neighbors are going to be there. And one group's going to be happy and the other's not. To me, that is not an acceptable solution. I, I, I do feel that the neighbors, i- if anybody is got the deck stacked against them. Obviously, the members of Greenbrier want to play pickleball, but the neighbors, the neighbors are going to have to live with it no matter what happens. So I think as, as a representative of the people of Kirkwood, that's something that we have to consider. We have to consider how these neighbors are going to live with pickleball. So I, I, I hope that all parties involved will take a different path in the future and come up with something that's going to be acceptable to all parties. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and go. We, it was, Councilwoman Jaxettek said, we've been dealing with this for a while. And I was on the previous council as well when we came up with this great idea that pass the pickleball or pass the sound study if you're going to build it. And it didn't. So now we've come to another, another decision. I'm going to be voting in favor of allowing the five feet. Try it, and if it, if it, if the sound study doesn't, it does pass, then the sound's not going to be a bother. If it doesn't pass, Greenbrier needs to figure out something else. Cover it. Don't use it, move it. But this is, to me, this is the end of the road as far as any use of, possible use on that court. So that's, that's where I am.
Well, Mayor, yeah, and I was alongside you there in past councils, dealing with this difficult situation. I mean, I live in back of Aberdeen Heights, so y'all may have heard things that went on during St. Joseph Hospital and tear down of St. Joseph and putting up Aberdeen Heights and the height and how close it was to us and et cetera, et cetera. It was not a fun, a fun process. I think we've gotten used to Aberdeen. It's not a pickleball court. But I do think that we've tried to appease all parties. I'm hoping that an additional, and I, I see trying an additional five feet of sound curtain is another step in trying to mitigate the sound. Another sound study will be conducted. And as you say, if it doesn't pass the county's requirements, then it won't, they won't be able to be used as pickleball, as, you know, for the intended use, and they'll have to come up with another Plan B. So I think at this point, Greenbrier's made some attempts. I know the neighbors are not happy with this, and I understand how that feels. Not that that's any consolation, but I think this is a reasonable next step in this whole process to try and figure this out, so.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
I was just gonna say, I, I agree, it's a reasonable step. I don't want to go any further than this. I'm sorry, you know, I, I think what, what they're proposing now is reasonable 15. I'm not in favor of going any higher than 15. I'm not in favor of enclosing it at this point. You know, if that, if that's not the answer, 15 feet's not the answer, then, you know, they may be just out of luck, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Right, roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
No.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Councilmember Zimmer?
No.
The resolution has failed. Resolution 30, 2025.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of AB Creative Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $496,312.17, which includes an 8% contingency in the amount of $37,000 for construction manager services for renovations to Little Mitchell Park and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 30, 2025 as read?
Motion.
Second.
Of enthusiasm. Questions or comments? Anyone with a question or a comment?
Comment. I'd, I'd like to say congratulations on getting a grant for this project. Again, back to Kyle and the city staff for going after that. And what a great improvement that'll be to that neighborhood over there and the overall city.
Thank you. I agree with you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Resolution 31, 2025.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of Broadway Ford Truck Sales in the amount of $51,005 pursuant to a Missouri Buy's cooperative contract for the purchase for 2025 Ford F-250 crew cab truck for the Water Department and authorizing and directing the Director of Procurement to issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 31, 2025 as read?
Motion.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Great, the resolution has passed. Resolution 32, 2025.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of Broadway Ford Truck Sales Incorporated in the amount of $62,498 pursuant to a Missouri Buy's cooperative contract for the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-250 truck with service body for the Water Department and authorizing and directing the Director of Procurement to issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion and accept, a second to accept Resolution 32, 2025 as read?
Motion.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
I've been drinking.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Thank you, resolution has passed. Resolution 33, 2025.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of Broadway Ford Truck Sales Incorporated in the amount of $52,160 pursuant to a Missouri Buy's cooperative contract for the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-150 XLT for the Street Department and authorizing and directing the Director of Procurement to issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion and accept, second to accept Resolution 33, 2025 as read?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Resolution 34, 2025.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of USIC at the rates provided in the memo, a copy of which attached here too and incorporated by reference herein, for utility locating services for the Water Department on an as-needed basis, not to exceed budgeted funds for an initial term of 12 months, with the option to renew for up to four additional 12-month terms, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 34, 2025 as read?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? For Schaefer? That sounds like.
I know, I was gonna get asked. I appreciate that there's three bids in here versus one or two. I used it all the time when I was in business. I'm retired now, so don't need to call them much anymore. They do a good job most of the time.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean? Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Resolution 35, 2025.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of USIC at the rates provided in the memo, a copy of which attached here too and incorporated by reference herein, for utility locating services for the Electric Department on an as-needed basis, not to exceed budgeted funds for an initial term of 12 months, with the option to renew for up to four additional 12-month terms, and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 30, 2025 as read?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Why does it cost more to locate electric than it does water?
The, the value is really associated with the number of locates that take place. We actually have an average of about 400 a month, and that's a little different in terms of volume than the water folks have. That's, that's where the different number comes in on expenditures.
Per call cost.
Yep.
I mean, do we pay on a per call basis?
We do, and we also have a designation that's associated with the volume too. Right, so that's why you would see the total not-to-exceed amount to be associated with the volume. But, I mean, if you say, well, from a unit price standpoint, why do we see some of the differences in the prices?
One is $10 and one is $13.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I guess in terms of electric being more than water, I think it's, part of it is the signal and the putting the signal on the electric wire itself and doing some of the other things.
But just find, I'm just curious, I'm not.
Yeah.
I'll expand a little bit on that.
Know why?
Well, so I've been told by yous, from some of the other folks, if they mislocate, there's a lot more involved with electric if they dig into it. And so I think it goes back to an insurance, the, the secondary insurer who ensures them. They hit water, you're gonna get wet.
Right.
Hit electric, you're toast.
Okay.
So.
Liability.
How's that? Was that simple?
That's pretty straightforward.
It's good enough. I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, where are we? Any other additional questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean? Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Resolution 35, 2025.
Mayor and Council.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, 2025.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I hadn't turned my page.
That's right.
Thirty-six.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal, proposal of trafficura in the amount of $370,800 for the purchase of fall block power for the year 2025 for the Electric Department and authorizing and directing the Director of Procurement to issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 36, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions?
I'd just like to say thanks, Mark, for coming in and explaining it to the novice. Thank you.
Any additional? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Resolution 37, 2025.
Mayor and Council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of trafficura in the amount of $616,000 for the purchase of summertime block power for the year 2026 for the Electric Department and authorizing and directing the Director of Procurement to issue a purchase order.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 37, 2025?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Okay, since there's already a motion and a second on the floor on the consent agenda, we are now in the, which are the minutes, we're now open to discussion. So, is there?
Yes, so my correction, I'm glad, I forgot about that already. There were two votes on there that they had marked me as abstaining, and I actually did not abstain. I was in the affirmative for both, so just wanted to correct those.
Those would be under Bill 1074 and Bill 11075, just for the record.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right, so now, so that's your motion, a second on, okay? And now we're voting on the motion.
Voting on the motion.
Okay, all, and I, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you all.
Okay, and.
Favor of the minutes as amended?
Yeah. All in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Aye, thank you.
It passes. The consent agenda passed. Okay, now we're moving to council reports, and I know that Councilmember Schaefer has something.
Uh-oh.
Okay, half a second.
I'm working on it. I got it. Okay, so, bear with me, folks. I will not be here for the next council meeting. So I'd like to recognize Cindy. I knew it, you're going to do me, too. So, all the years, she's retiring, so let me get to where we're going here. She's retiring. She's been a right arm. She's been stellar, kept me honest. Whew, that was a full-time job. Anyway, I know that she has a fetish for dark chocolate. And so I'd like her to come up, and I didn't bring a presentation or anything, but I have some dark chocolate for you. And it's just a small one, so you might be able to squeeze through a month or so. To share.
Thank, yeah. Thank you, and I know we all appreciate.
There's a line.
If she's honest.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer, and we all appreciate Cindy very much. Any other additional council reports? Yes.
Southeast Connectivity Group had a presentation at the Performing Arts Center this week. A lot of great information on how to potentially connect our Meacham Park neighborhood through Kirkwood Commons and the downtown area.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And Mayor and Deputy May were both there.
Yeah. Great.
And I'll just do a little landmarks. If you're up and down Monroe, there behind Spencer's, you can see the, at 115 Monroe, the Henry Boe House. The group that bought that one and the one next door are rehabbing them and going to have, I think they're going to open it for businesses. Anyway, they took the siding down and working with landmarks, trying to figure out if they could restore some of that original building. There is a lot of, there's some brick damage, but they have committed to really restoring it. They're going to do an addition off the back. Landmarks worked with them. It's all been kind of worked out, but it's a great-looking building, even in its current state, but drive by and enjoy that. It's very exciting. And it's in 1866. So it's, it's a, it's a great building, and delighted that this group is saving that.
Yep.
I've always heard it called the Boe House. Does, is that correct?
I think so. I think it's, but it was Henry Boe was the original, yeah.
But there's a Boe House across the street, too, that's painted white.
Oh.
Right across whichever way is, is Madison. Yeah, the white, it's, it's brick, and it's painted white, and it's immediately across the street from our police department and the parking lot here. That was also a Boe.
Okay.
Yeah, the Boe family was a very early family in history of Kirkwood.
Isn't it BOP?
I don't know.
Any other council reports? Okay, Chief Administrative Officer report.
Yes, Mayor and council, I have a couple of applications for liquor license. First one is to sell intoxicating liquor by the drink, including Sundays, and intoxicating liquor in original package, including Sundays, for Cafe Amalia at 10907 Manchester Road, and this would require council approval by voice vote.
Do I have a motion and a second to accept, to approve the application?
Second.
Is there any comments or discussion?
I have a question. So on, liquor license is selected. I'm not used to this new form that we've got here. It's got intoxicating liquor by the drink, including Sundays, and then also, it looks like they're going to be selling liquor in original packages as well, so it's going to kind of be a
Mm-hmm.
Market, a liquor store, or whatever? I just wanted to clarify that.
But they're requesting.
Okay.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. To clarify, we are not looking to sell liquor. We are looking to sell wine. We're going to have catering and grab-and-go dinners, very similar to gourmet-to-go in Ladue. And we are working with a wine rep, and we would like to have bottles of wine to go with the dinners.
Thank you. Perfect timing with gourmet-to-go just closing.
Correct.
Any other questions for the applicant? Alrighty, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Is nay? The application passes.
All right, the next one is, the city has received an application for liquor license to sell intoxicating liquor in original package, not including Sunday, for STL Charcuterie Boards LLC at 343 South Kirkwood Road, number 108. And this requires similarly an approval by voice vote.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve the application?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Questions, discussions, comments? Is the applicant here for this one? Could you come tell us just a little bit?
I just want to sell wine with the charcuterie boards, so.
Kind of similar to what we just heard.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, basically.
And tell us your name.
My name is Carly Sanders.
And Carly, will you own this charcuterie?
Yes, I do own it. I've been in business for four and a half years. So I just opened, we actually just opened on Tuesday, so.
Okay. Oh, you are open now.
Yeah, we just opened, yeah.
And tell us, are you, you're sharing the space?
Um, yes, I am, with Gooey Louie.
And how does that work? Do you operate different hours than that? Sorry.
Um.
All want to know.
No, we have the same hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Are you divided, or you're both in this?
Um, we're separate businesses, yes.
There a wall down the middle, or?
In the building.
Like, in your space? Or are you both just operating kind of?
Yeah, we're just both in there. We have our, you know, our signage, our business names.
Okay.
Kind of scattered. We're just sharing everything.
Great.
Yeah.
Carly, we get asked lots of questions. Citizens are going to be asking us, so that's why I'm grilling you. Anybody else having questions?
We'll have to visit.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good. Yeah, we just opened. Come see us.
What is, what is, if I walk in, what do I, do I, can I buy and eat there, or is it just a takeout?
Um, yeah, so it's not considered a cafe, so it's basically all-to-go. So I do a lot of catering orders and parties and things like that. I'll have some little to-go boxes. We have some display refrigerators, so there's some grab-and-go stuff, a lot of local cheese and meat and things like that.
Having a grand opening party?
We are, on May 10th, at 3:30.
Thank you. Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? The motion, or the application passes. And now we move to?
City Attorney Report?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. City Clerk Report?
Yes, Your Honor, I have one thing to report on, a scheduled upcoming public hearing for May 1st, 2025, a request for a special use permit amendment with conditions to add an outdoor bar